And call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, September 12th, 2022. If we could stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Langen, Pratt, Bellinger.
Here.
Reins.
Here.
Gilroy.
Here. Hanson.
Here.
I would entertain a motion to excuse Mr. Langen from this evening's council meeting.
So moved.
Oh, thank you very much. Do I have support?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that motion carries. Next, we have approval of this evening's agenda unless there's any changes that need to be made.
I would make a motion to amend the agenda to add discussion of items for the agenda for the joint city Williamstown Township meeting. That would be item 10B.
Thank you so much, Dan. I appreciate that. Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Holly, do we need a roll call for an agenda or can we... Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. Moving along on our agenda, we have a presentation from Frontier Communications. I invite you to step forward and if you could give us your name.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Michael O'Keefe. I'm vice president of external affairs for Frontier Communications. With me today is Rob Williams. He's outside plant manager for Michigan. And we want to talk about, and we're excited here really to be able to talk to you about an investment in Williamson, and that is in the deployment of a fiber, the home network. As everybody is aware, our copper network is a lot older than probably anybody in here. And we've gotten about all the useful life out of what we can. So we are putting fiber in in communities across Michigan, actually across our entire footprint right now. So really excited about the product. I've been around the fiber product that both with Verizon that was picked up by Frontier and then now with Frontier's deploying, and it is a state-of-the-art deployment. So we have a presentation. We'll move quickly through the slides. If somebody could advance it.
Can I put that one light down? Sorry to make it so dark, but it's easier for us to read.
Oh, no, it's okay. So, yeah, so really it's an upgrade. And it's not a replacement, so just be clear, it's not a replacement of the copper network because of PUC requirements, we have to maintain the ability for somebody to use the copper network as well. But it's a huge upgrade. So 50 megabits up to 2 gig, and that 2 gig is symmetrical speed. It's both upload and download. We found our customers really like the fact that you can upload as fast, particularly with telemed, with learning from home, you know, working from home has become so prevalent for everybody. Big files are being sent up as well as down, so it's really, really an advantage for customers. And fiber is almost unlimited, so it depends on the electronics in the office. You change out electronics, you can tweak the speeds up very quickly. It's not like copper, very dependent on data loss because of capacitance over a short distance of footage. So let's go ahead and go to the next slide. All kinds of advantages to fiber. You guys probably have some other fiber providers. It's much more reliable. In my past, the electronics, anytime you get a storm, copper network's subject to electrolysis, shorts, grounds, crosses. Fiber is not. The only thing that impacts fiber is being cut. So we do place the fiber particularly in the underground or in the ground. We put it in a conduit and subduct, and we also directional bore it so we know it gets good footage under the ground. It's not just few inches under the ground. So it's very, very reliable. Electronics in a house is about the only thing that can really knock it out. So let's go ahead and move on. This is a quick, just a depiction of the build and the network. We start starting the central office. We change out and actually install optical laser technology equipment in the central office. That goes out and feeds hubs, and those hubs are capable of feeding about 330 customers in each hub. Those are located along the route. We go north, south, east, and west, four routes out of our central office, based on a demographic area where we went to surf. And those hubs are much smaller than what you've seen out here right now for the copper telephone equipment, which are big boxes. These hubs are much smaller, and you're going to be involved. You'll see from our engineering department, when there's so many permits, where are we going to put them? We want to put them in discreet locations where there are not an eyesore for the public. Out of those hubs, we feed our terminals, so it's your distribution cables that go out to these terminals. They can feed up to eight customers, can feed out of one terminal. They can be aerial or they can be buried. I've got some pictures of both later in the presentation. And then you have a SAVF modem. It's wireless. It can be wired. You can run anything with cable to it as well that's capable of serving the customer. And we have extenders if they have a big geographic footprint in their house and its signal's not passing, it can be extended. So let's move on. Construction. So during the construction phase, we're going to be putting out yard signs, let the populace know and your constituents know that we're building. We don't want to take anybody by surprise. Go ahead and move forward. One of the tasks our construction crews have is to use door hangers. So anywhere they're going to go down, if they're going to go down the street, and they're going to be in people's yards, they're going to be doing any kind of intrusive work. We don't want your customers calling you saying, who's digging? Who's out here? We don't want them to be surprised. Also, with these door hangers, it will have the contact numbers for the local construction companies, so they take the calls to come back and fix the yards or any complaints happen. If it does get to you, you'll have a contact list who you can reach back out to Frontier so we can, you know, go make sure our construction company is following through. Okay, let's move on. This is just a picture of that hub I was mentioning before, and then a buried handhole where a splice is made for the fiber. But these boxes, again, are much smaller than the big ones that we've had out here. Go ahead and move forward. This is just a picture of directional boring. So rather than trenching through people's yards, we can have one send pit, one receive pit, quite a ways down the road. And from a repair perspective, we're not tearing up a big area of a customer's yard. You can see the hole on the right side there. It's pretty small, right? And we put caution tape around it if we're going to leave the hole exposed. So, okay, let's move on. So the various ways that we're placing our service, and you'll see a slide summarizing this at the end, is underground, using our existing manhole conduit system, fairly short here in Williamson, but we're going to use it so we don't have to tear up any kind of streets in the city. Goes out to a spot, and then we use either our aerial facilities that are already there, and we go up the poles and we overlap, we call it, to the existing copper cables that are there, so we follow the same routes. And while we're doing that, we're going to be doing repairs to those poles. We're going to be doing repairs to any spans that are sagging, any tree trimming that needs to happen when we're putting this new network up. We don't want to put it in a way it's going to be subject to maybe getting taken down by trees or impacted from clearance perspectives or anything like that. So this is an example of a buried terminal, much smaller than the terminals you see out here right now from the telephone perspective. Go ahead and move on. That's an example of an aerial terminal. So I noticed driving in, there's quite a bit of aerial cable, you know, when I looked off to the right and off to the left. And so we'll be just going along those same routes with our new fiber cable, so not really that intrusive. And go ahead and move to the next slide. This is a picture of the optical network terminal on the side of the house. It's pretty small. A lot of these we actually locate inside the house, called just inside O and Ts. They have to be within 20 feet of the power because we have to access the multi-ground neutral to eliminate any potential fire hazards from a different potential in the grounding. And voice will be offered with this product. By the way, the product will be available for residential and business. But you can get voice with this as well. So if a customer has a landline today and they want to keep their landline phone, they can keep it and get off the copper network. We just run the wire to this terminal, and they can, it feeds the jacks and feeds all the phones in their house. So the only problem is it doesn't come with battery backup. The way it works right now, if you have a voice through the telephone company, it's powered by 48 volts DC from our central office. So even if you lose power at home, you can still talk on your phone. That's the way, because we power from our central office batteries. This won't be that way. But a customer can buy and own themselves battery backup. So it's D cell battery bank they own, they plug it in, they can talk for several hours if power goes out. Our problem's going to be if they have a cordless phone that's plugged into the wall. It's not going to work for them anyway, but it's an option for them. Okay, let's move on. This is a depiction of the area we're going to be building. You can see we're going to be passing at the bottom 2,400 customer locations. So we're really basically covering the entire city. So there's 2,000 feet of underground that should be using our own manhole systems, vacant ducts, 25,000 feet of aerial. And again, that's following our same cables and using our existing network, rightaways and such. And then 15,000 feet of new buried. Now, the new buried is where, you know, we're going to need permits issued, we're going to need locates done of local utilities, those kind of things. But when we build our network, we typically issue permits in four different routes, north, south, or northeast, south, and west. And we'll build an entire route before we move on to the next one, and we turn up those customers first. So we don't wait till the end and go around the clock and turn up everything once. We'll go north and we'll turn up those customers, and we'll go east, turn up those customers, and we'll go south, turn up those customers. So because, you know, I mean, we're there, we may as well turn it up for the customers. So Robin's here to help answer any questions you might have on anything on the footprint of where we're building. But you can see the different color codes, and the little red marks are the hub locations. So you've got the different colors in the cables are based on the size of the fiber. The yellow is a different size than the green fiber. It's just for us, it just shows us how big the fiber is. But each of the little red squares is a hub. And out of that hub, it serves a polygon surrounding that hub, an area. And so, you know, the light green at the very top on the north side is fed out of that little orange dot right at the top, right? That's the hub that feeds it, the one below it, there's a hub for it. So each different area shading has a different hub. Okay?
Wonder.
And we want to make sure that you guys have the ability to tell us, nope, we don't like this hub location. So you'll get the GPS coordinates, you'll be able to know this is where we're going to, you know, we'll take a picture of this is where it's going to be located, so you guys can say, no, we don't like that. Move it, you know, 100 feet to the south or wherever to, you know, be out of the way of customers and not a distraction. So questions?
Well, first of all, I want to say this is exciting for our community. I think it's always a great opportunity for our residents to have upgraded technology and communications, no matter what it would be. My question for you would be, when do you anticipate starting and completing?
We're planning to start, correct me if I'm wrong, Robin, is the beginning, the end of this year, so fourth quarter, you should start seeing permit requests. And, you know, in Michigan in particular, I mean, having lived in Michigan for eight years myself, I know there's permafrost laws, we can't get equipment out into buried and rightaways and such. So it'll probably be when those, you know, we can maybe do some of the aerial, but for any of the buried, we're probably going to be maybe even approaching second quarter next year when those, I think they lift in, is it February, March, or it depends on...
Typically, March, April, just depends on the weather of...
Depends on the weather.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I was going to say, it depends on the weather.
So we could anticipate a completion close to the beginning of summer?
Yeah, yeah. I would say, Robin, is that fair?
Fair enough.
Excellent.
And it's all based on permits, what we're running to, that kind of issue.
Sure. Sure. Excellent. Tom, go ahead.
I have two questions. One of which, when we're looking at the map of where you're running your fiber optic lines, how far from those main lines can you branch out to? And my reason for asking that is like our schools are not really directly near where those lines are.
Where are your schools at, based on the map here?
Well, they're close. I mean, our high school's going to be over in like this area, you know, elementary.
Well, that'd be served. That'd be served. This is the hub.
How far?
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to cable this whole thing.
Yeah.
Everything that's in that blue.
Anything, the shaded area, it's covered.
Well, it is covered.
Okay.
Excellent.
So it reaches out to that, to this boundary line. What we don't know, where is your jurisdiction for permits for the city?
And that's something that John will be able to work with you on.
If you could provide that information to us, I can pass that on to Pierce.
Sure.
Or just email it to Mike to get that on, so they'll have that information so they know where the permit stopped, and we have to go to the county after that.
It's pretty close, other than the northwest corners. It's pretty close to what the city wants.
So John, you are the contact for permit issuance?
Yeah, that'll be fine. Yeah. Yeah. I saw it from the city engineer.
Okay.
And then your second question, Tom.
Yeah, so I have a second question, and this one's kind of more purely out of curiosity. So if your average user residential go wants to get fiber optic, how does it compare price-wise to what we currently have in cable or whatever?
Really, we're not supposed to be talking price. It's going to be very competitive.
I'm just curious.
It'll be as good or better probably than any other provider you have.
I'm just curious if a normal residential consumer will utilize it.
They will. They will. I mean, at least the base price is very, very reasonable, even when you get up to 1 meg and, or 1 gig and 2 gig, it's competitive with anybody.
Can I assume that with the door hangers that will be going out in the community, if a resident were to call and ask, they would be able to get that information then, correct?
Yes.
As far as pricing and plans and everything?
Oh, yeah.
So our residents will be able to make those calls and investigate it for themselves?
Absolutely. We, our technicians actually, they're compensated for selling.
Sure.
So they will be, anywhere they know we're passing our fiber, they're going to be out there talking to those customers, both the construction tax and the service tax.
Yes, go ahead.
This may be another question that your techs would answer or whatever, but going back to one of your slides, you talked about different technology, like a different modem in the home or whatever. So would they need to, would customers purchase a new modem, or if they already owned a regular cable modem, are most of those things compatible or...
Generally, not a cable modem. Cable modems are leased. I have, I don't have access to Frontier where I live, and so I have access to, but I bought my own modems, right? You can do that. Yeah.
Okay.
It's, yeah, it's not as, or you can lease them.
I think my last, and I'll grab you in just a second, Terry. My question would be, what type of disruption would a resident experience during this type of installation process?
Really, it should be mindful on the aerial. I mean, just if they switch over, it's just service long enough for us to mount the OT on the house and do the wiring inside to connect everything. On buried, you know, we will be in their backyards in the right of way, but we'll be behind them. And if they're in a spot where we're, you know, digging the sending pit or receiving pit, they'll have that to deal with. But as far as disruption of service, if they have copper service today, it won't be any disruption.
Excellent. That was kind of what I was looking for. Terry, you're going to wrap up after this.
Okay. This is for real fiber right to the home. This is not fiber to a hub that's near you within the blocks or whatever.
Nope. Nope. This is the drop, the drop from the terminal to the house is fiber.
Is fiber. So the conversion from fiber to copper doesn't happen at a hub, it happens at your house?
It happens at the, it happens in that OT, that optical network terminal.
It's not at the modem, but at the OT?
Yeah.
All right. Gentlemen, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And again, Mr. Hannafin, our city manager, you'll work with him to get this moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Appreciate it. Moving along, we're moving into our action items. We have our second reading of the ordinance amendment for the conditional rezoning of 502 East Grand River and conditional rezoning agreement consideration. So with that being said, John, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So this is the second reading of the conditional rezoning for 502 East Grand River from C3 to C2. The first reading was held at our last regular council meeting. Also included is a conditional rezoning agreement. This audit's been discussed at length at planning commission, DVA, and now our second council meeting. I know the city attorney, we'd be happy to answer any questions he may have, as well as I can do my best, so.
Have we, have we had any changes to the language from the first reading? No? Okay. I see that there are two actions here, so I'm assuming the first will take a vote, and then the second will take a vote? Okay. All right, I'm looking for that first motion. If nobody has any questions, Terry.
This is probably for Tim. These requirements, these limitations that you can only have 10 to 15 vehicles, you can have one or three employees, you can go from nine to six and so forth, do those requirements, those conditions, do they apply to future people that own that property as well?
Yes. This is conditional rezoning, which means that the property owner himself proposed these conditions, and the city cannot negotiate these conditions. He proposed them, and we either take them or leave them.
Okay.
And we were accepting of those. And they do apply because this is the conditions of the rezoning. So any future use has to comply with those.
So the future owner?
Would have to comply, or come back and ask for a rezoning.
Okay. Got to get the question. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there's no other questions for Tim regarding the language, I'm looking for that first motion.
I'll make the motion to complete the second reading of section one, amendment rezoning. The zoning ordinance of the city of Williamson is hereby amended to modify section 74-2.102, thereof being zoning map of the city of Williamson as follows. The parcel of property located at 502 East Grand River Avenue, Williamson, Michigan, parcel ID number 33-18-03-36-378-201, previously classified as C3, Vic's Business District, upon entry into the conditional rezoning agreement is conditionally rezoned as C2, General Business District.
Thank you, Tom, for taking that on. I appreciate it. Do I have support for that?
Support, Ellen, Jim.
Thank you so much. Do we have any discussion or questions before I call for the roll? All right, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right.
Who would like to read that second motion?
I'll be ready.
All right, thank you, Terry.
The motion to enter into the conditional rezoning agreement between the city of Williamson and Donald Brand pursuant to MCL 125.3405 and section 74-9.508 of the Williamson Code of Ordinances for the conditional rezoning of the real properties located at 502 East Grand River, Williamson, Michigan, 48895, parcel ID number 33-18-03-36-378-001.
Thank you, Terry. I appreciate it.
I'll support it again, Ellen, Jim.
Thank you so much. If there's no other questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Reins?
Yes.
All right. Our last hour time for this evening is the advanced construction of the downtown development authority parking lot. I'm going to turn this over to John.
Thank you, members of council. Mayor Gilroy. Just by, by point of clarification, this is the parking lot that is behind the Williamson pub and the businesses on the other side of...
Northwest corner.
Yeah, other side of Putnam Street. So when I started here, there's been a pretty consistent discussion at the DDA meetings about that parking lot and the state of district area that it's in. And so with us having a contractor in town for the asphalt, or for the, sorry, for the kayak launch, we thought it'd be a good idea to try and get some additional pricing from them, and we also got some pricing from some of the contractors, which Mr. DeVries can talk about if you need clarification on that. And so we were able to secure a really good price, just under 125,000 to repave that lot. So if council was to move forward, there are three actions that would be required, and that would be to approve the advanced construction of that lot, to approve McCurdy's asphalt proposal for their, their estimated amount, and also to approve the contingency or added contingency that the DDA has to approve the advanced construction resolution and plan amendment at its next regular meeting. And what that would do, that would, that would bind the DDA to reimbursing the city overtime for this. The challenge is the DDA right now has between $40,000 and $50,000 in what I'd call discretionary income every year, so they don't have the full amount, they don't have enough amount saved to pay for that project. So this was a way to get this project done now. Our general fund is in very good shape, and over time, the DDA would make the general fund whole. So I think it's a good strategy. It's a strategy that I've used before. I know even this council, I think with the, with the water fund, the general fund, I think actual council chose to forgive that. The DDA's in a position, they wouldn't have to do that. They would be obligated to pay that overtime, so.
And I think it's a smart move because we put the time, effort, resources into rebuilding that boardwalk, and that parking lot is in desperate need. And waiting until DDA has the full funding would take a while because DDA does have other issues, and DDA is committed to, you know, improving our downtown area. This has been on their list of things that they would like to see get done, and I think John has brought forward a great solution for it. So I am in favor of it as sitting on DDA, as the mayor. We've had lengthy discussions regarding that and the need for the improvement. So I would open it up to questions or comments. Terry?
So gentlemen, is agreement here between us and the DDA, or is it a signed thing that says these are the numbers required, isn't it, these days?
It's an actual binding agreement that they've got to enter into in order for the project to happen. They could decline it at some point.
Yeah.
And 125,000 of discretionary funds from us?
Yes.
From our budget, how much of a stress is that? I mean, it seems like a big number to me.
We have, we have around $2 million in general fund fund balance, which is over 100% of our annual operating on the general fund side, so.
Not really a stretch at all.
It won't move the needle much.
Right.
Good.
I think it's a good use of resources. Dan, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. One, I think, is probably in Scotts-Balaway, but is there any water sewer tie-ins, anything like that, that runs through that parking lot?
The water mains that are in that parking lot were replaced by the DDA in the 1995 water main project that was huge throughout town. So the water network is extremely good in that area. Sanitary sewer-wise, and some storm sewers cross through there, you know, we've looked through some of those videos. It doesn't appear that there's some immediate concern right now that would outpace the life of this pavement.
Gotcha.
Excellent.
Sorry, I had one more. Does this, does using any of this money affect any of the money that we had set aside for Putnam next year?
No.
Okay.
My only question, just out of curiosity, is if they're, if they've looked into whether there's any grants available that might help with this project?
It's an actual binding agreement that they would have to enter into in order for the project to happen. And they could decline at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a hundred and twenty-five thousand of discretionary funds from us?
Yes.
From our budget, how much of a stress is that? I mean, it seems like a big number to me.
We have right around two million dollars in general fund fund balance, which is over a hundred percent of our annual operating on the general fund side, so.
Not really a stretch at all.
It won't move the needle much.
Right. I think it's a good use of resources. Dan, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. One, I think, is probably in Scott's bailiwick. But is there any water sewer tie-ins, anything like that, that runs through that parking lot?
The water mains that are in that parking lot were replaced by the D D A in the nineteen ninety-five water main project that was huge throughout town. So the water network is extremely good in that area. Sanitary sewer-wise, and some storm sewers cross through there. And we've looked through some of those videos. It doesn't appear that there's some immediate concern right now that would outpace the life of this pavement.
Gotcha.
Excellent.
Sorry, I had one more. Does this, does using any of this money affect the money that we had set aside for Putnam next year? No. Okay.
My only question, just out of curiosity, is if they're, if they've looked into whether there's any grants available that might help with this project?
It's always, you know, our goal to try and find grants to do that. The challenge is, unless, for downtown development in particular, there has to be job creation tied to it. So if there was a building renovation in progress on that block, and we could tie bar those together, but those are typically, you know, a fifty-fifty match. But there's nothing like that of the scope that would... There's programs available, but there has to be like a really significant redevelopment in order to get the public infrastructure part funded.
Great question, though. I appreciate that, Tom. Noah?
Scott? So is this a re-milling process and filling that hole? What is the process?
They, they will mill the asphalt that's there and help find or, I guess, rotate that into some of the existing subways that's there. And then we will get the excess material because they're gonna put in four inches of new asphalt in two layers, two too much layers.
Is there some areas that get way down?
Yes. Well, well.
It'll get graded and smoothed out and...
Correct. We did find the drawings from this, and it goes back to the early nineteen nineties, early nineteen eighties.
I was around back then.
Yes. So, and that's, that's a pavement that's still out there, way beyond the service life. We are going to incidentally have some concrete squares poured around the catch bases that are there. I mean, with the concrete contractors doing some of the sidewalk work in town in about another week.
Excellent. Great.
That answers my question.
What's the expected service life of this?
I would expect it to serve very well for twenty-five years, but should probably get closer to thirty-five.
Excellent.
So the last one went from the early nineties, so that is thirty years. Okay, got it.
All right. Can we do this all in one motion, Tim? Or do you need each individual item, one, two, and three?
I think that they're
All tied together?
They're related, yes.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm looking for one motion with all three items, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the advanced construction of the Downtown Development Authority D D A parking lot at Old Mill Park and approve McCurney asphalt proposal of one hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and zero cents with the contingency that the D D A approves the advanced construction resolution and plan amendment at its next regular meeting of September twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Dan. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll?
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes. All right. That concludes our action items for this evening. We do have two discussion items. John, do you have an update on our road diet?
I sure do. Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. So city engineer and I had a really good Microsoft meeting today with a whole host of folks from M dot. It was really the kickoff meeting for, for this project. They did confirm that they do not see the need to have updated traffic counts. They think the traffic counts from sixteen are good, and they have some other, that there's some other acronym they use, but they have some other additional, like, lad counts they use. So they're, they're good with that. So really, what they'll need from us in the future, they will need another resolution. We'll also have to hold a public meeting, which we plan to anyway. And what we're waiting on from them is the exact, like, design criteria that they'd like to see for this project. So we're close to be to have. Scott, you were there. I don't know if you have anything to add?
The only other thing to add was that they also acknowledged that the synchro model that the city paid for and did back in the twenty sixteen time period, that is all being approved as well at this point in time.
Excellent.
So we don't have to redo that effort.
Perfect. So that actually keeps us on a good timeline then? There's no lengthening that timeline with adding any type of count or?
John, they will want the new resolution. We did a resolution back in twenty seventeen, so they just said you'd like to redo that.
Yep, yep. Holly, if we could probably put that on each other. I would say we could be staying on track of, of our timeline.
I would say we're right where we need to be, right in that, that good zone.
Excellent.
One of the, they actually have a road diet expert in their transportation engineering planning group. And his comments were, they would move, it's really strange from a state agency, they'd say they'd move just as fast as we want to move.
Excellent.
And so Scott and I, through the computer, both kind of like wince at each other because we've heard that before. But, but we know that the city won't be the limiting factor. But it's still very realistic that, you know, if all things line up with the, you know, the public is accepting of the design plan, and we, we have the, you know, the rights, we get the rights on cost share from M dot. And I think we're certainly within the timeframe of next spring, next spring and summer.
Excellent. Well, let's keep that on as a discussion item. Let's prepare that resolution and move it forward. Yes, Terry?
And do we even answer yet to the, what you call the sixty-four dollar question? Where does this traffic die? Where, where does the three-lane conversion, where does that start?
We talked something out, we talked something out a little bit in their desires for it to be from basically just past Zimmer, from city limit to city limit.
Excellent. Yep.
That's the, that's the desire.
That makes common sense.
Yeah.
To do it anywhere closer to downtown would not make sense. Yep.
And knowing that the Zimmer is, and there's the, the condition where on the, on our western border, heading east into town, that one part of the, the street is the city and one part is not. M dot would, would contribute to that portion definitely as far as like cost. But they, they have desire. They don't want an accordion approach of two lanes, three lanes, or four lanes, three lanes, four lanes.
So I guess then what we can anticipate as we continue to move forward is we will have an overlay map of what that is going to look like. Zimmer out to Williamson Lakes, and we'll have that at a future council meeting. All right. Yes?
Yeah, that was one of the, the main discussion points. And it was a really a, a, a good, I guess, professional discussion amongst the M dot reps about what exactly they, they need to see. And we're just like, just tell us, and we're ready to put together.
Perfect. Excellent. Perfect. Keep us updated with that at each council meeting. That would be wonderful. Next is, I'm sorry, Terry.
When people ask, what should we tell them about the dating on this?
I wouldn't give them anything right now.
I would hesitate to.
Let, let John and, and Scott direct that to us. And we would get that in a future council meeting.
So within like Q T, Q two next year, Q three?
I, I would say it's, it's very, it's not even Yes, I think even being conservative, the schedule of start of fiscal year of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, which is July next year.
Okay, got it. All right.
All right. We added our joint meeting with the Williamson Township as a discussion item. John, I know you and I had the opportunity to talk about an agenda and topics. So I'll go ahead and turn that over to you.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Gilroy, members of council. Traditionally, the, the city's met with Williamson Township, and we've invited Nisa, the, the library, the senior center. I think you can get animal controls invited historically. So, you know, my thought, being this is my first time around, is to bring this to all of you and see if there's, there's topics that you'd like to see added as part of that discussion. So here we are.
Dan?
I, I think what we were just talking about, since this is most likely going to extend out to Zimmer Road, which extends into the township, letting them know what we're talking about, and we're gonna talk to the M dot and that kind of thing is a very good idea.
Yep. I know that John and I had a discussion, and I know Chief and I have had a discussion. And I'd like to put the topic on the table with Williamson Township regarding our Williamson Police Department service to them, and see if they would entertain that, opening up that conversation again. Currently, they're served by Meridian Township, but I would like to see if we could have that conversation with, with their trustees and their supervisors.
Because at one time, we had that conversation with Robert.
Yep, exactly.
I think having the conversation is good, but we need to know, like, numbers and the effect on town and all that in addition to whatever happens out there, but whatever, how would it affect here?
I, I've had a conversation with Chief, and I've asked him to bring the data as far as mutual aid response calls, what his plan would be for growth in the department, financially, what that would look like. And also, you know, what we would want to offer our services to Township. So I think it's just good to get it back on the table and have Chief be a part of that as well. And I know that it's been a conversation for a long time. Anyone else have any items that they would like to bring forward as a joint discussion with the Township?
We're already doing cemetery boards and stuff.
Yep. Okay. Excellent.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is with the police services is, you know, we haven't had that discussion as, as a full group. And I think that it's certainly definitely worth looking into, but we need to have those internal discussions. So I think for the sake of this meeting, at least let them know that we, we are, we are interested in that if the opportunity, or when, not if, when the opportunity presents itself. I think that contract expires probably eighteen months now. I think they just recently re-uploaded the township.
Excellent. All right. Well, if there's no other points of discussion for that joint Township meeting, Holly, can you remind me again, it's going to be
Next Wednesday.
next Wednesday, the twenty-first, here in our council chambers. It is an open meeting, so we do invite public from city and township if you have interest in watching us talk about things. You're more than welcome to join in. We did not receive any correspondence. I'll move right along to department head reports. We do have city manager Hannafen's report. Do you have anything to add to it?
The only thing I want to add is that Mr. Mead is here with us tonight. We're excited that he's here.
Congratulations and welcome again. Welcome home, actually.
Yes.
Welcome back.
Yeah, for those who didn't know, Mr. Mead served the, the city well for a couple of years. And then we were lucky enough to have him become available again. So we're pretty excited about having him here. The only thing I would add, I mean, you know, my, I think my report's pretty detailed, but Scott and I did have a really good meeting with Baker Tilly on the rate study. So look, look for that to be presented at the council. Might not make the next meeting, but definitely the, the first meeting in October. I think that'll be, that'll really set the table for our utilities discussion moving forward for water and wastewater. And finally, just, I just want to compliment to all of you, and it sounds strange, but, you know, the advanced construction of the, of that parking lot, be able to do that because of your sound fiscal management over the last, you know, five, ten years. You've really done a great job of managing resources. Without being overly frugal, I mean, you've been conservative in your budgeting, which is good, which is, you know, scratches me where I, I know, same with Mr. Mead, so that certainly helps us. But be able to do things like that and really, you know, focus on those, those target areas. So thank you for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for John regarding his report?
It was kind of exciting to see the ice house project kind of back in the next year.
Resurrected.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. We're gonna have that discussion next Monday.
Is that going to be, I know with some of those plan amendments and things for the two, is that gonna be an extended timeline then, or how long? If everything goes well with Tifa, do we, how long do we think that's going to?
I, I think for the sake of the project, I think as quickly as they can move through the, the, the planning process, the planning and zoning process, which seems pretty reasonable based on their, their initial concept.
Excellent. Again, we have our Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering reports in here. Lots of good work happening for a lot of our residents. If you do have any questions, please reach out to John, and he can help get those answers from Livingston County. But it's almost good to see work being done with improvements or new builds, whatever it might be. We have committee, some committee reports. Would anybody like to share?
I attended the D D A.
Yes.
Because you were off on vacation doing your fun stuff, and it went very well, just normal stuff. So that's moving forward. And then I got to attend the recent meeting.
Excellent.
You had prior commitments, so I did that. And for Nisa, one of the unique things is we are working on a policy and have a draft written for health aid for some of the firefighters and E M Ts who are going to train.
Excellent.
So we've got a policy and process for that, and that's going to move forward. I know Tommy's got a copy of that, and I'll look at. But other than that, Nisa, what?
That's good. Excellent. Anyone else have a meeting that they need to share information?
First and next to me, but we've got a lot of projects moving forward.
Good. All right. Well, always, always good to hear updates on that. Yes.
One fact, and Nisa, one of the things that they also talked about was selling some property, and it's down next to the old fire station. Does that have any relationship to the stuff that we may or may not have done in the past?
I think, isn't it the small lot that's across from the old station?
Something. That has nothing to do with our charter or anything. I think one of our previous Jim, or who owned it, was one of the scumbers of that piece of property.
I can't. We use it every year for lineup.
For lineup, right.
That's another thing that...
Yeah, I know. But then, it's going up for the state.
Yeah. No, I appreciate, I just, that was the only thing I could think of.
I think that's two pieces of property.
Yeah.
Oh, Joe Cox used to own it.
So I think they own both corners, high and mullit, and mullit and Grand River.
Right.
It conjoins right there.
They talked a lot about, you know, in their charter, going back to look at the Nisa, information, see how that affects, they could use all property now. And then I said, wait a minute, I said, let me check with our group, too, because I don't know if we have anything tied to that.
I don't think we do.
Well, I didn't know.
All right. Well, if there's nobody else that has anything to share, we'll move along to audience participation. And I don't see anyone out there. We'll go to council member comments. I'll start with Tom.
Uh, thank you, Noah, and Nisa.
Yeah.
All right, Terry?
Okay, I'm in.
All right. Noah?
I just want to thank all the members of the city staff. When you guys do your invoicing, receiving, the information's great. That allows us to do our jobs because you can see information, and it's, our job's a lot easier as well. So thank you for your stuff.
Well, I guess you'll have a camera. Welcome to the new treasure. I think you're going to have to hear. It's been four months? No?
It's been about eight hours, twelve hours.
No, since Rachel left.
Rachel left when?
April.
Yeah, April.
It's been a while. Yeah. Glad to have you on.
Thank you.
Dan?
So are you responsible for this big number this time around? I mean, we've had these small bunch of things that almost have the seven hundred thousand dollars.
We might have had as tax collection and other things. But we did get a couple of new vehicles in there.
Vehicles and tax ones?
It took fourteen months to get a truck.
I'll echo Terry's comments. Welcome. Glad to see you.
Thank you very much.
I read it to Rachel over the weekend, and she was singing your praises, and she, she knew you well and couldn't, couldn't say more good things about you. We're happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna echo that as well. We got to meet briefly before the meeting, so we're very happy to have you back. And, you know, good things, and glad to have you at the table this evening. Scott, good to see you at the table because, you know, it's been a while.